All right. Good evening, everybody. Let's uh let's come to order. And we are here for the regular session of the Nautrona County Board of County Commissioners for our Tuesday, March 5th, 2024 meeting. It's 5:31. Can we have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Frill.
Here.
Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Milne.
Up here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Nicolason.
Here. We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the born and unborn.
Yes. The next item of business is our service awards. And I'm pulling that up. All right. All right. This is a continued presentation. We had some submissions come in from the Fair Board for five years of service, Deborah J. McMullen. For 20 years of service, Brian E. Rohrbach. And for 40 years of service, Thomas W. Jones. Let's give those county employees a hand, please. We've said it before, I've said it before, many before me have said it before, that this county runs on the shoulders of its employees, and so we're very grateful for the quality of employees we have and are really impressed with with the service they provide. The next item of business is approval of our consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Commissioner Milne. Is there a second?
I'll back in.
It's been seconded by Commissioner North. Any discussion? Commissioner North?
No, no, sorry.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. The next item, six, on our agenda is the public hearing. This is MS 24-2, the MDC subdivision. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of MS 24-2 MDC subdivision. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Nautrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. May we have a report from staff?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is MS 24-2, an application for a major subdivision by MDC of Wyoming through its owner, Ken Milne. They request approval of a vacation and replat of Westgate Park 3, lot number 18, to create MDC subdivision consisting of five lots on a parcel of approximately 12 acres in a light industrial zoning district. The minimum lot size for this is half an acre with public water and sewer, or two acres without public water and sewer. The existing land use for lot 18 in Westgate Park is developed and is used as light industrial. There are currently three structures on the lot. The adjacent land use on all sides is also light industrial. The water source for this would be Vista West Water, and the wastewater would be Vista West slash Westgate Park Sewer District. The property is located on the south side of West Yellowstone Highway, south of intersection, the intersection at West Yellowstone and Six Mile Road, off of West Derrick Drive, in the Westgate Park 3 subdivision. Commissioners, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this case on February 13th, and unanimously voted to recommend approval of the MDC plat. The planning commission at that time did raise some concerns or questions with the plat itself and what was going to happen. The first being whether there were plans to pave the road, as the existing road is paved up to the entrance. We did receive some further clarification and comment, Commissioners. The subdivision itself, or the ISD for that subdivision, does require that the road be paved as part of its as part of its rules to conform with the rest of Westgate Park. So I we would recommend, if this is approved, that that be a condition, that it be paved to the ISD standards. The second issue was brought up during public comment for this, and that is the DEQ's involvement with possible contamination of adjacent lot use. There was previously a, I believe fiberglass company that had run on that land. It's since been shut down, as far as I understand. But there was a comment that the DEQ is still involved, and there is an open case for that. Our understanding is that case was, they were unable to settle, and it's been referred to the Attorney General's Office. The planning department was in contact with the DEQ, and we inquired as to whether or not this would affect, the open case would affect any future landowners. They were unaware on whether it would affect any future landowners of the subdivision, referred us to the AG's office, but we, at this time, have not received a return call to receive any additional clarification on that. So the DEQ is involved, but not specifically for this subdivision or this application. Whether utilities would need to be extended into the new cul-de-sac was an issue that was brought up. I think there was an issue with potentially needing another fire hydrant closer to the lots. I think that that, if this is passed, that would also be a recommendation from the planning department that the utilities be extended. And lastly, if the cul-de-sac turnaround was of a sufficient size, as on the initial plat, it was not delineated the size of the cul-de-sac. We did measure it after the fact, after that meeting, and it is 120-foot diameter, so it does comply with fire code. And my understanding is JKC Engineering was working on updating the plat to include measurements of that cul-de-sac. There was a public comment at that hearing. Three spoke in favor of the approval, and one spoke in opposition. And staff sent notices to 20 neighbors, but since had received no written comments. For planning considerations, Rodent Bridge had no comment on this plat. The Health Department, given the size of this major subdivision being five lots and less than 35 acres, the Health Department was contacted, and they had no comment because there was public water and sewer. The Nautrona County Conservation District commented on the slope and soil types, and additionally, on erosion control and sedimentation risk that would also need to be addressed at the time of development. There were no identified flooding issues, and the City Mills Planning Department reviewed the plat and had no comment. Moving into the criteria for approval, criteria one, the subdivision is consistent with the Nautrona County Development Plan and Nautrona County Zoning Resolution. That standard is met. The MDC subdivision lot dimensions are in compliance with the 2022 zoning resolution, and the zoning is light industrial, and has a half an acre minimum when connected to public water and sewer, and as I stated, that would be connected to public water and sewer. Criteria two, the subdivision, if the subdivision is in conformance with the general provisions of Chapter 1 and the subdivision design standards of Chapter 7, that standard is met, and the subdivision is in conformance with with that, with the additions of the paved road, I believe. Whether the applicant has provided evidence that the, there's a sufficient water supply that will be acquired, as I stated, that standard's met, as Vista West Water Service District will be servicing the water. Criteria four, whether the applicant has provided evidence that public sewage disposal system will be established, that standard is also met, and again, that is Vista West, Westgate Park Sewer District that will handle that. Criteria five, whether the applicant has provided evidence to show all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil and topographical conditions, hazards, or requiring special precautions have been identified. As I stated, the Nautrona County Conservation District was contacted, and they did have recommendations that due to the soil and slope, that the development be overseen by professionals and with guidance from the county, that due to earthen irrigation canals being located on three sides of the property, that the, it's critical that to minimize erosion and soil, of the soil and construction debris during construction of new buildings, and any excess sedimentation in natural drainages and irrigation canals should be removed to minimize any potential flooding problems. Necessary services, including fire, police protection, that standard is met. The subdivision is within the Nautrona County Sheriff's jurisdiction and requires no new services. The subdivision appears to be compatible with the surrounding area, not detrimental to the future development of the area. The subdivision would remain light industrial, and there's no detriment to the health, safety, or general welfare of the inhabitants, so that standard is met. And whether there's documentation satisfactory to the Board of County Commissioners that the improvement in service district requirements have been met, it's currently part of Vista West, Westgate Park Improvement and Service District, and the vacation of the, and replat of the lots has no impact on that service, so there's no financial guarantee required. I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, Jared. Couple questions. With respect to criteria six, no, I apologize, five, Nautrona County Conservation District recommendations, because those are just recommendations, those are not conditions that we would impose, is that correct?
That's correct.
The condition that was mentioned about utilities being extended into the cul-de-sac, are those wet utilities, dry utilities?
I believe it was an additional fire hydrant that would be needed, so the water would need to be extended into the new cul-de-sac.
Has the applicant, has there been communication with the applicant about these conditions, and is the applicant, I know the applicant is here to speak to those tonight if he chooses, but what's your understanding of the applicant's willingness to agree to those conditions?
I can't say off the top of my head, Commissioner, or Mr. Chair, whether or not he has officially agreed to those those extensions. The, as I stated, the ISD would require the road paving, so I think that in order for him to comply with the ISD, he would need to comply with that criteria. But I don't, I'm not certain whether it was communicated about extension of the water and fire hydrant.
And finally, the, from me, for now, the DEQ's involvement with possible contamination of adjacent lots, what are we supposed to do with that?
It was, the Planning and Zoning Commission did believe that the, you needed to be aware that that was, that the DEQ case was opened, and that that was at least something that was brought up. I don't believe that it's anything that we can really do anything with at this time, other than kind of monitor the situation, but I don't believe that it would require us to do anything.
Thank you, Commissioner North.
Thank you, Jared. I do have one question. Most of the questions have been answered. My understanding is that there is a fire hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac, and we did discuss the size of that, and and I'm assuming that that meets the current fire code?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner.
My next question is a little bit more complicated. The way, the way the road goes, the way the road goes through, it's right on the edge where the building is, that first building on your, on the south side. Will there be a problem with the offset on that underneath our current zoning, or will that be grandfathered in, since it was after, after the fact?
I believe since it was after the fact, it would be grandfathered in, Commissioner.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record, so that we didn't have any problems in the future.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laird.
Did any citizens complain about this?
The only complaint that I'm aware of was the public comment, and it was not specifically geared towards the subdivision itself. It was more the company that was on the property before, and the contamination and DEQ's involvement. So it wasn't really negative comment on the subdivision itself.
They were complaining about a previous owner?
Well, it's the same owner, Commissioner, of that company that is attempting to subdivide. But she had stated she wasn't necessarily against the subdivision itself. It was the, safest way to put it would be the owner and the DEQ's involvement.
She was, she didn't like the owner?
Because of the case that they had ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. So at this time, I'd ask for those individuals who wish to speak in favor of MS 24-2 to please approach the lectern.
I just really have questions, that's all. Judy Jones, 335 North 8 Mile, Casper. Now, he was saying that they're gonna have to have roads going in there to redone. That's not gonna fall on us taxpayers, right? It's gonna fall on them. Ken Milne, is that your dad?
Not even related.
Not related to him? Okay, 'cause I was wondering. And then, what are they gonna do with it? What's, what's the plan? Is it, you know, sell to different people to put in little buildings and shops and things like that? Okay, that's cool. And I guess that's it. I just kind of wanted to know what they were gonna do with it, since it's right up by my place, so anyway, that's good, thanks.
Thank you. Any other individuals who wish to speak in favor of MS 24-2, please approach?
As far as the
Mr. Milne, sorry. Would you please put, state your name for the record?
Ken Milne. As far as the extension on this, to the second cul-de-sac, I did all that, put the fire hydrant in three or four years ago. And there is another fire hydrant out front as well. And I can't remember what your other comment was. Oh, the the cul-de-sac, if it's, if there's a problem with that, we could center it up, if that's what you like, and we will be paving that road.
Okay, I think that was the one, the agreement to pave it, the paving condition you're okay with?
Yes.
And, and, and the, and staff mentioned the utilities being the fire hydrant, but your understanding is the fire hydrants are already in place?
Yes, it's
Can we bring that back up? We are all looking at the screen and not seeing the map. Go ahead, sir. Go, go ahead, if you'll help us understand, and I guess it, it doesn't have anything to do with other utilities, phone, gas, power?
It's right there on the cul-de-sac.
Mr. Milne. If you don't speak into the mic, no, it's okay. It's just that if you don't speak into the mic, that it's not recorded, it doesn't come through, so.
That area now has water, sewer, and a fire hydrant. It does not have the paving yet.
Are there any other utilities that might be placed in there? I don't want to impose a condition on you to put utilities that you weren't planning on putting in and that aren't necessary. So that's why I asked staff the question on what utilities are we talking about. He mentioned the, the fire hydrant. You're telling us the fire hydrant's in place. I'm not, I'm not sure if we need the condition or not.
The fire, like I said, the fire is already there, and there's a gas line that goes through there.
Commissioner North.
I'm sorry?
Do you, do you know where the, or is there any electrical utilities or anything like that that run through there? I know you have the buildings on the north side of that and stuff.
There is three of them big electrical boxes that you tie in for the buildings.
Okay, so you've got the tran, or so the power's, the transformer box is, okay, so they're already there, and you, you've told me that your, the cul-de-sac doesn't have to be centered, but it just has to be a certain size, according to what the International Power Code says. It has to be a minimum of 96 feet.
Okay.
That's the minimum. So we just want to make sure that that, that's in compliance with that. And how wide is the actual entry road going in there?
It's I'm not sure exactly. It's, it's, there's trucks going back and forth all the time.
We can, we can ask Legal on that. He's got that information, too. And a lot of these questions, I'm just asking for the record to make sure that we have everything on the record, so there's not any questions.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, access 60 foot right away.
Okay.
And to clarify that issue, if there are those utilities already available, none would be attached to it?
Okay, thank you.
Well, and maybe the question is, and clarify, or correct me if I'm wrong, but if the utilities are in the blue circle where it says Elton Court, but they need to be extended to the proposed cul-de-sac, which is the partial red circle, i- is that the extension of utilities, or are the utilities already to that red cul-de-sac?
Yes. That dark spot that you're talking about, is that the one directly in front of 7041? I'm sorry? The dark spot that you mentioned, is that directly in front of 7041? Jared, could you, yes.
Do it again.
Okay, I, I heard you that time. Yes.
So I'd ask staff if, what your recommendation is as to whether we include that condition or not at this point with the clarification given?
With that clarification, Mr. Chair, I don't think we need that condition included.
Are there other questions for Mr. Milne? Mr. Milne, did you have anything else you wanted to tell us?
No, that was it.
All right, thank you, sir. Are there any others that wish to speak in favor of MS 24-2? Please approach the lectern. All right, then at this time, I'd ask for, oh, sorry. Come on.
JKC Engineering.
One more time, so everybody can hear.
Okay. My name's Louis James with JKC Engineering. I'm the engineer on the project, and the utilities are at the end during the planning commission. Hal Hutchinson got with me, and I did send him the information. Apparently, the city's GIS is not updated with, I guess both the, you know, the county's GIS doesn't have those utilities shown on the GIS, but they're actually in there, and I've given that information to them, and I can also provide it to you guys, too, the utility side of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Milne.
Do you guys run a utility easement in to that point?
It'll be inside the roadway.
Okay, and that roadway's got its easement and all.
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, just be like a regular city street.
Okay, good.
It'll be in the, in the, right away.
Other questions, Commissioner North?
And I take it you have authorization from Vista West?
Yes, we've provided that to the, to the planning. We've got letters of acceptance
Okay, so they're allowed, they'll allow you to tap into the sewer and the water?
Yep, we have, and then, and you guys have those letters.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. James? Thank you, sir. So at this time, I'd ask for those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to MS 24-2, please approach. Second call for individuals wishing to speak in opposition to MS 24-2. Third call for individuals wishing to speak in opposition to MS 24-2, please approach. There being no others to speak for or against MS 24-2, I now declare the public hearing closed. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve MS 24-2 with the facts and findings, along with the agreement from the property owner to pave that area.
It's been moved by Commissioner North. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Frill. Is there any discussion? Very good. At this time, all those in favor of approving MS 24-2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, that motion carries. The next item is for public comments. I'd like to make, I guess, a public statement. We're sure privileged by you people coming tonight. This is the largest gatherings in the two years I've been on the commission, so thank you. It's, it's meaningful to the commissioners that you show up, and I wanted to say that before any of, before most of you come up here, I want to offer I want to offer the courtesy to any individuals who wish to speak on a matter other than Squaw Creek, Coates Road, state land gravel pit, you get to go first. So again, we don't, we don't want you to have to stay unless you really want to. So if, if there's anybody here that wants to talk about something other than the potential gravel pit, come on down.
Good evening, good evening, county commissioners. I have a right to come back, though, don't I? On the gravel pit, I, I'm going to talk about something besides the gravel pit now, but I, I have a right to come back, don't I? To talk about the gravel pit later.
The clock's already started. And who are you, by the way?
My name is Terry Wingerder, a previous county commissioner. But anyway, I do bills on Wills a lot, quite a bit since I retired. And I start up at Bar None and I work myself all the way down Salt Creek, Dome Lane, and Blair Lane, and I end up, and I end up at Midwest Estates. About when I was going up to Midwest Estates, kind of bumpy, I heard on the radio that the mayor of Mills, Wyoming, was complaining. She said, you know, I have more residents in my, in my town, or my city now, excuse me, than 4200. And she's, she was actually on the radio looking for, saying that she's looking for more residents to live in her city. And I thought, well, why doesn't the county just give her Midwest Heights? I mean, there's, there's at least 50 to 75 people that live up in Midwest Heights. And right across the street is Bird Road. And that's in the, that's in the boundary, that's in Mills anyway. So that's what I suggest, that she could end up with another 50 to 75 residents if she would just take over Midwest Heights, if you guys would allow it. So that's what I wanted to say this time. But I'd like to come, it had nothing to do with the gravel pit, but I'd like to come back later.
Have you talked to the mayor of Mills about annexation?
No, I haven't. I just thought of it the other day. I haven't seen her, but maybe I should call her about that.
Well, if there's a discussion to have, we'd be happy to have it with her, so...
Well, I thought maybe you can bring it up to her in your next mayor, county commissioner, or whatever meeting you have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wingerder.
Thank you very much.
So what I wanted to have everybody recognize tonight is that we have a lot of people here. And what we want is for this to be a civil discussion. We want it to be a discussion that's positive in that it helps with information to us and to your community. I think that applause and boos and things like that, take up time. Personally, it doesn't really impact how I, what, what weight I put on comments provided by people. So I just look forward to a constructive discussion tonight. If you would please raise your hand to give us an idea if you'd like to speak tonight about this gravel pit. All right, so if those are the potential speakers, and even if you didn't raise your hand, you can still speak if, if the moment suggests to you that you should. I think we can deal with five minutes, which is our, our practice. But if you don't need five minutes, please don't take five minutes. I'm fine with you, you coming up here and saying, I agree with what that guy said, and turn around and going back. If you want to give us more detail, please feel free. But if, if we're hearing the same thing from five or 10 people, it's, it's probably not that impactful for any of us. We have received, I don't know how many, hundreds of emails from the community. So understand that we are seeing those, we are reading those, and, and we're trying to respond to those. We've received lots of phone calls on this issue. I think that the commissioners, many of us have been up to these, these lands. And thank you for giving us some tours and pointing out things to us and talking to us as we drive on your roads. I know that some of us have talked to our governor and some of us have talked to our, the folks at the DEQ and state lands and our, our representatives. So all of that's occurring. You know that to be the case because you're talking to them, too. So that's, that's good. I would ask you to please raise your hand if you oppose the gravel pit on these state lands. And then if you're undecided or in favor of the gravel pit on these lands, please raise your hand. The, the opportunity is to speak your concerns. It's not a question and answer session. Please understand that we're not going to engage in a long-drawn-out question-answer dialogue with you here. That's not really productive. If you have questions, you can submit those to us. Emails work, letters and emails work the best so we can keep a record of it. And at the appropriate time, we can, you know, I think we can put that into evidence. I want you to know that the county has not received any application from anyone to mine gravel on these state lands. That after conferring with legal counsel and reviewing the law, I think we are clearly of the opinion that a gravel operation would require a conditional use permit from the county. And that you all need to know that no conditional use permit would be issued before a public hearing is held. And that you all need to know that notice of the public hearing will be provided. And we will, we would take evidence at the time that public hearing occurs. Finally, and thank you for listening, and I'm almost done. My understanding is that there's a representative of Prism Logistics present to speak tonight, and I would afford him the courtesy to speak first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Commissioners, my name is Kyle Tru. I am a manager of Prism Logistics. I'm also a Neptuna County resident and have been the vast majority of my life. I plan to be here the rest of my life. And, and thank you. I wanted to give you an update on where we stand and how we see this process going forward. So we're in the gravel aggregate sand. There are a lot of different nomenclature for the, for the gravel business. We're in that business. There's clearly a need in our community. And we've been looking around Neptuna County for a location to provide gravel and other various aggregate products to Casper. I'm pleased to report, we have a, we have state leases. We have the gravel leases on state land south of Coates Road. And we have completed our testing. We've gone up and sampled different areas up there. And preliminarily, I can report, there seems to be a very substantial reserve there. We have not finished assessing the testing that we've done to assess the size of the reserve and the quality and applicability to the needs of the Casper area. That, that's ongoing, and that'll take some time. Sadly, these things happen in weeks or months, not days. I wish things happened faster, but it takes time to, to quantify all of this. Preliminar, preliminarily, I can tell you, there appears to be what is likely to be an applicable and valuable reserve to be, that could be used in the Casper area. So having said that, we're not done yet. And if we are to move forward, as the chairman mentioned, there's been no proposal. We have not proposed anything either to you or to the DEQ. We would first go to the DEQ and propose a mine. We would talk with them. The DEQ tailors specific mine operation parameters for every mine in the state. And if we complete that process, and if it looks positive to us and positive to the DEQ, who in many ways recommends how the state land is used, then we would come back to the county and seek a conditional use permit. That is going to be months away, not weeks away. How long, I don't know, but it will be months away. We met with the county months ago when there was someone staffing the county planning and zoning role. There is no longer someone staffing that role, is my understanding. But when there was, we met with that person. And we were told that there would be no need for a public comment period for the specific request in this specific area. We have identified significant public interest in this area. And so we would recommend that there be significant public comment period. Not one comment period, but our recommendation will be, if we get to that point, in discussion with your staff, that we have at least three review sessions where we could propose a, a operation and lay out as many details as we can, and then let the public digest that, give it consideration, come back with every concern and question they can. And it seems to me that, that any significant operation that mankind undertakes usually needs an iterative process before it should move forward. These things are usually not a one-time presentation. Everyone decides what they think, but usually it's iterative. So that's what we would, with, what our company plans to propose. We can commit tonight to total transparency. We're not trying to do this to sneak up on anybody. And, and as we go forward, that's the, that's our intention. Because there's no actual proposal, I don't think it would be productive to get into a back-and-forth point, counterpoint, tonight. So I appreciate that these meetings are recorded and available on the internet. And I will listen to every comment that's made tonight, but maybe not in person tonight, because there's no proposal yet. So we would be only discussing hypotheticals. But I can commit to you, the county commissioners, and through you, the entire county of Neptuna County, that we think if this moves forward, we should walk, not run, that we'll do it with transparency, and that we'll give people multiple opportunities to look over any possible plan and question it multiple times before coming to the county commissioners officially and requesting a conditional use permit. Or maybe it'd be better to say, as, as a process toward requesting a conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Tru. All right. Ma'am, did you have something you wanted to say other than the gravel pit? I apologize. I thought we waited and only Mr. Wingerder stood up. So come on down. This is non-gravel pit related. Go ahead.
You know I'm your favorite, and you passed me by. Rosemary Saban, Neptuna County resident. I understand that even while you gentlemen are out of town, you can't escape my presence, if only by way of mention, when you were in Cheyenne. A report of a most alarming nature has reached my ears. It seems that the blind were led to follow the blind and worse, were less than accountable for doing their homework. Consequently, members of this commission likely and others of the Wyoming County Commissioners Association did not support any real property tax reform for the residents of this county or state when you had the power and ability to do so. A consensus vote of what could have equated to a more favorable recommendation was made. Unfortunately, it was against anything that would have brought us what we have long stated that we require of you as elected representation for the people, and that's statewide, folks. Two meetings ago, it was remarkably proven, well, three now, that our chairman completely comprehends the issue in this entire complexity in that of property taxes. A key issue was acknowledged and identified in the closing commissioners' comments. So that's a good thing. I'm glad that it, it is acknowledged and identified. HB 045, 0045, and Senate File 0063 aren't relief, and they certainly aren't even caps, when ultimately they both are the same essentially and guarantee increased revenue through property taxation annually. The Wyoming County Commissioners Association votes of recommendation as follows. HB 003, oppose. HB 4, support. HB 45, support. HB 52, support. HB 103, monitor. HB 127, oppose. HB 133, strongly oppose. HB 134, support. HB 203, strongly oppose. HB 211, strongly oppose. Senate File 54, oppose. Senate, Senate File 63, support. Senate File 68, strongly oppose. Senate File 119, strongly oppose. Senate File 121, monitor. It's been stated repeatedly that the commission has its hands tied and the solution lies within legislation. This is not entirely true and has been vocally stated on multiple occasions. A reduction in spending on things such as airports and libraries that in fact do not serve the majority of residents is one such solution. Numerous cost burdens that require increasing revenue and are not any obligation of taxpayers to be funded through the county remain in budget. Flights to limited destinations at diminished capacity are subsidized by the taxpayers severely struggling to hold on to possession of their own homes. $3 million annually is allocated to the library, which in all probability is utilized by homeless and city habitants. An establishment actively seeking to provide duplicate expenditures for services already funded and provided through other resources paid for with public funds. Shouldn't the needs be what's funded with our dollars feeding the piggies banks? I'm sad to announce that HB 203 failed the House Revenue Committee. It offered immediate reform and relief to the residents of Wyoming by exchange of zero control property tax for a consumption tax in the form of sales tax, controllable by the residents of Wyoming. I'm terribly concerned that House Bill 45 is still in play as it offers no reform or relief. And I'd also like to tell you folks in the audience that there is a petition at the back of the room with Brenda Johnson for 50% off the residential property tax, if you guys would all care to sign that if you haven't already. Thank you.
Thank you. And the chair will respond that the Wyoming County Commissioners Association has committees, including a revenue committee that spends a great amount of time before session and, and sometime during session, reviewing bills that are proposed and filed. There were at least six that the Wyoming County Commissioners Association supported. And a number of those, I contacted our Neptuna County delegation on and told them why they were supported by both the WCCA and myself. We are going to see expansion of some of the relief for property owners who are most in need. That means folks who can least afford property taxes. And, and there are some other things that are, are going to pass, too, that will provide some relief. With respect to House Bill 203, you know, that was proposed by Representative Harshman, whom I like and respect tremendously. But I oppose that. The Wyoming County Commissioners Association opposed that because, number one, it was filed at the very 11th and a half hour, and it fundamentally changes, or would have changed, revenue and taxation in this state. And you should not, in a 20-day session, say, yeah, that'll, let's fundamentally change things so that the counties across this state wouldn't have any idea of, of how to budget and how to plan for things moving forward. So while a sales tax increase and a property tax decrease may make some sense in the future, it ought to be reviewed by an interim committee. And that was not only my position, but I think in general, the position of the Wyoming County Commissioners Association. So we, we are going to see some progress on some of these things. And I think that the legislators, if you remember, two years ago, they thought this was a Neptuna County problem. Guess what, guys? They know that this is a statewide issue. And so we're making some progress, and we're going to continue to make progress. And we're going to continue to do our job, which in part is lobbying for you all. So I don't know. Commissioner North has also spent quite a bit of time with, with property tax and issues down in, and property tax issues down in Cheyenne during the session. Commissioner North?
I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, when, when bills get filed, we never know what they're going to look like until they come out and the governor signs them. So there's a lot of bills that have gone through, that got initiated, that have changed so much in the process that they don't look anything like they did when they first started out. out. Senate File 44 is one of those bills. It's gone all over the place. I mean, that's just one example. There were some things that were taken out in the original bill that turned it out to be a good bill. There was an amendment put in last week on the third reading in the House that changed the whole complexion of that bill, too. I don't know what's going to happen with that bill right now, because it's sitting there. There are some things in the amendment that I don't necessarily agree with, and there are some things in there that I do agree with. But as far as other property tax bills, Senate File, or House Bill 203, made it all the way to the third reading in the House before it got killed, and it just barely lost there. That is going to the interim. That's one of the suggestions that I made. When I saw that that wasn't going to make it, I suggested to the WCCA that we did do support that, to go to the interim committee, so that it can be looked at. It is a radical change. I'm all for it, because I'm a firm believer in consumption tax over a tax that you have absolutely no control over. And so that's my personal feeling. If you don't have the money to go spend stuff, you don't pay the tax. You don't have to worry about losing your homes. That was one of the reasons why I supported it. But even against the WCCA, I let them know that I did support that bill, and so I actually testified remotely for that, so that it would get out of committee. There was a lot of bills this year, some good, some not so good. Like I said, when they get started, you never know what they're going to look like until the governor signs them. That's when you finally find out. But I have spent a lot of time with our legislators, trying to do what we can to make sure that our property taxes are under control. Unfortunately, everybody doesn't see things all the same way, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Laird.
I hate to tell you all this, but you're not going to see any discernible tax relief. And I've read some of those bills, and the really terrible ones didn't make it through, and I'm not sure what's going to make it through. There isn't going to be a cap on that tax like you're hoping for. The way that bill is worded is pretty tricky, and take a New York lawyer to understand it. And so what I'm going to say is, don't go home thinking that the property taxes on your houses are going to go down. We've been told that there may be a 23% increase in this county on agricultural land. Haven't, I don't understand that quite yet, but I'll get it figured out and see if there's anything that we as a commission can do about that and about taxes, because what breaks my heart is when our citizens come in, and they're elderly, and they're in tears because the taxes on their property was raised and their income wasn't raised. My grandparents, who were here since the early 1900s, couldn't pay these taxes if they were still alive. And so I'm hoping that the legislature will do something for the elderly that we can implement and still run our state. You know, we have coal and gas problems right now with what's going on, and we're going to continue to see that. But we're pretty tough people here. And I think we take care of each other, and I thank you for all coming down here.
All right. I just want to make sure, anybody else, to speak on a non-gravel pit-related item?
Kurt Simpson, I live in that county north of town. Excuse me. And on Mr. Harshman's bill, one of the issues that I've heard some people speak about is the possibility of that sales tax would be okay, but there should be some way to guarantee that down the road, when county money doesn't seem to be holding up the way they wanted it to, they put the property tax back in place. That's not going to work. Didn't help anybody. If you replace the property tax with a sales tax, and then two, three years down the road, things don't go the way you want them, and you put the property tax back in place. You didn't help anybody at all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to keep inviting people who want to talk about non-gravel-related items. All right, then, we're going to move into the gravel, the possible gravel pit. Please try to be courteous and remember the general guardrails, and let's have a good discussion. So come on down if you want to talk to us.
My name's Steve Lofton, president of 71 Construction here in Casper, and we do a lot of gravel mining. And so I'm an enthusiastic proponent of gravel pits in my professional life. And so I wanted to talk about gravel pits that you may not be aware of in Casper and Neutrona County that have not caused problems. So here, I'll start with one. 71 Construction has one across the highway from Clark's Corner. It's been in production for about 10 years. It's fairly close to these people's houses. Knife River, the old Casper Concrete, has an old, old pit, probably 50 to 70 years old, across the street from Evansville's houses. Mobile Concrete, across from Paradise Valley, and it's also by Mountain View's Sixth Avenue Street. 71 Construction, again, we have a pit out on Salt Creek Highway. It is an industrial area. Recycled Materials has a pit on Robertson Road, fairly close to, I think it's Cimarron Circle. And there was also a Neutrona County Road and Bridge pit up on that same hill. It may not still be active. There is a reclaimed pit on Casper Mountain Road. This is in the same area you're talking about. I think it's on a state section. It's been reclaimed, so it's not active anymore. There's an old pit that we mined a long time ago for the county, across from Bear Trap Meadow. I don't know if it's still active. It doesn't look like it's been reclaimed yet. There's an old mine on Archery Range Road. It was an old felspar mine. An old mine by the Girl Scout camp. It was asbestos. Oh my God. There's a pit at The Ridge Apartment Complex at Blackmore on Newport Street, inside the city limits. There's one on Chamberlain Road in Mills. So, okay, I just want to say that you can live near a gravel pit, and hopefully, they will be good neighbors and provide low-priced products. And thanks. That's it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Keep coming on down.
All right. Colby Frontero, Neutrona County resident. And I'm speaking mostly as the gravel pit as a subject matter, but more as to try to educate myself and frame my understanding of the county commissioners, and I think you did that well when you said lobbying for you all. My understanding is, when you talked to me about campaigning, and we talked a lot about trail usage and joining the commission, was that you all lean on your community to help lobby for us, which I think is really good. When I taught high school English, we were inundated with the cowboy ethics. We implemented that curriculum, and a couple of the cowboy ethics state that be tough but be fair. The main one, I think, that's applicable here is know where to draw the line. And there are lots of user groups here, lots of residents out on Coates Road, and when you signed on to be the cowboy commissioners, another one of the cowboy ethics is to ride for the brand. And so I think at this point, you're in a position that can be really hard, which is to decide which brand you're going to ride for. And that is either the user groups that are recommended, or that are, you know, being represented here, or if it's that you're going to represent industry, which I think is good. We're all industry people. We live in this state because it's got a high level of industry, and it's been successful for us. So when Kyle was talking about applicability and value, we have to consider what that gravel can be. It does have value. We also have to consider what that land is right now, and does it have value and applicability to the community? And I think when we look at that, you have to balance it. And so my question or my request is that you look at this in a sense of value for the community that you represent and that you lobby for, because I think when you do that, the decision to draw the line becomes very clear. And it may be tough, but it's fair. And I think you all ought to live by the cowboy ethics that we teach to our students in our schools, and I hope that you choose to use this as an opportunity to do that. When I called Kyle as soon as I got wind of this, we had a good lengthy conversation where he gave to me all of the pieces and parts of the gravel mine, and we had a good conversation. He also gave me a similar history lesson. And I think that's a good conversation to have, and it's meaningful, while at the same time, the conversation of whether or not this is an applicable spot, and it does have value, is also something to consider. We have to consider all of the user groups, not just the ones who are going to mine for gravel. And I know gravel has applicable usages around the community and county that are also useful, but in this specific instance, land access, preservation of resources for multiple user groups, I think, may outweigh, and I hope that these people can also help illustrate that, that we need to know where to draw the line on this. And I hope that we can lean on you to do that, the way that you pitched it in your campaigning, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Esther Anderson, and we have lived on Coates Road for 50 years. We have raised our family there. I ran cattle in the school section until the last couple of years, you know, and it is, we have a very close relationship with all of our neighbors here. And we specifically chose this location for its wide-open spaces, beautiful views, lack of water, sound, and light pollution, and its peaceful location. I think the gravel pit will cause us grievous harm financially, and it has destroyed our health and peace, and the particulates and the air pollution frighten us and our family. My husband could not come today because he cannot breathe, and he cannot walk even into the courthouse, and let alone get up the stairs. And he has worked in the construction for all his life. But we've been looking at insurance policies for the last two days, because we get this pit, we are, he will not be able to breathe, because our house is 50 foot from the road, and there is, on a gravel road, and it's not good. Breathing in very small crystal and silicon particles causes multiple diseases, and an incurable lung disease that leads to disability and death. And my husband is close. We will be exposed on our road, if they are saying what, they say he's going to run two pits 24 hours a day. We will be exposed every minute of every day, and the amount depending on the Wyoming wind. And if our very lives do not concern you, then our property values should. Our home and land values will drop 30 to 50% the moment prism shovels hit dirt. This will destroy our water, because everyone from the base of the mountain to the city limits are on shallow wells. And unfortunately, I have cattle. I still have cattle. I just couldn't give them up. And I have cattle, and I have horses, and we have animals that live on that road. And I cannot imagine what, there is such a thing that cows can get diseases from dirt. So this will destroy our watershed and wells, as evidenced by hundreds of thousands of reports from states across the nation, and it infringes on antelope and deer migration on already severely depleted and struggling herds, as well as destroying habitat for eagles, falcons, owls, bobcats, mountain lions, bears, turtles, foxes, coyotes, and other species. I personally have had a bear encounter a couple times, and we've had a lion kill a deer in our backyard. But have there been any archaeological or paleontological studies done here? On our property, we have found sharps, bullets, hatchet heads, pot-belly stoves, and other fossils. And I have seen teepee rings when I run, when I'm out there on my horse. And what else will be destroyed under the bulldozer blades? And I think I just need to articulate that we are looking, if we're older, we can't haul water, we cannot, we can fight this, but the dirt, we wouldn't be able to move because we couldn't afford to move. And that unfortunately is really affects, it will kill us, basically, and my husband's already halfway there. I do have a solution, though. My husband, in his professional life, found gravel pits. He worked for a lot of contractors. And when I asked him after the first meeting if he could, he said, yeah, he knew of two right off that would not affect public. So why doesn't Kyle come to him? He should know. My husband has a very good reputation, and he would be willing to help him. If he can think of two right off his hand, right off the top of his head, there are more. And he has found some of these that Mr. Lofton talked about. So, you know, he worked for, right, for years. So that's all I have to say, but thank you very much.
Ma'am? Thank you. What was your last name? Anderson?
Anderson.
And you're on Coates?
Right on Coates, right next to the road.
And we don't, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't typically require people to provide their addresses, but it could be useful if we know where you live, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. Just one little comment for Commissioner Laird. If it breaks your heart to see elderly people coming into your office with tears in their eyes because they can't pay their taxes, it's going to be an issue for a lot of people that live down below that, when they don't have water in their homes anymore, and they cannot afford to haul it, and they can't afford to sell their house because they've lost the value on it. And it's going to, it's going to cost them their life savings, so just wanted to...
We do need your name, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I'm Carolyn Griffith, and I live on Coates Road. I am just here to present some petitions to you. We didn't even start these until Thursday night, February 29th, so basically five days ago. At this point, we have over 1,700 signatures, and we also started a Facebook page about that same time, and we already have, and these numbers are growing exponentially every day. We have over 1,600 people on Facebook, and they're all quite active. And the reason I wanted to come up here first was, I didn't want to get redundant with what was going to be said, but I did think it was important for you to hear what all these people have signed. And here's the text of it. "We, the undersigned state, stand united in our opposition to permitting gravel pit operations within the confines of school sections 34, 35, 36, township T-33-North, R-80-West. This endeavor threatens not only the tranquility of our community, but also poses significant risks to our health, environment, and economic stability." The property value impact. Research unequivocally demonstrates that the establishment of gravel pits leads to a substantial devaluation of properties within its vicinity. Our homes, our investments, and our community spaces could face irreversible harm, impacting generations to come. And I did appreciate hearing about how many old mines there were. And we did have some, at least one gentleman from Evansville that lives near that operation, and talked to us about how he has so much soil in his yard and... that operation and talked to us about how he has so much soil in his yard and his fences are shorter now and his siding was sand blasted off, but he made it a point to come to our meeting on February 29th to let us know that. Regarding health hazards. The proximity of this proposed mine to residential areas and Fort Casper Academy and other schools raises grave concerns about dust pollution. Exposure to crystal and silica, a byproduct of extraction activities poses severe health risks to our families, especially our children attending the nearby schools. Regarding road infrastructure and safety. The influx of heavy machinery and increased traffic associated with extraction operations will undoubtedly strain our local roads. This burden not only threatens public safety, particularly during winter conditions, but also imposes significant maintenance costs that our community cannot bear alone. And Mr. Hagler has invested a lot of time and effort in maintaining that gravel road. Regarding water and environmental concerns. The project's reliance on limited water resources raises serious doubts about its feasibility. Furthermore, the disruption to local wildlife habitats, including a vulnerable antelope herd and the threat to recreational activities tarnish the very essence of our community. Legal and regulatory oversights. We question the legitimacy of classifying this project as a limited mining operation and the apparent lack of required notifications to local landowners. Such oversights undermine the trust between the community and our regulatory bodies. We literally discovered this on February 14th and we already have this many people that are just surprised by it and appalled. Financial imbalance. The projected minimal state royalties from this operation pale in comparison to the potential costs borne by our community and the environment. This blatant financial imbalance contradicts Wyoming's commitment to the greater good and serves as a stark reminder of the need to prioritize the well-being of our citizens over profit margins. In light of these concerns, we urge all stakeholders to reconsider this ill-advised project and instead focus on sustainable development initiatives that promote the long-term prosperity of our community. Would you like me to deliver these to Tracy tomorrow or?
We'll take them now. And I think that we won't make a mess of them, but if you want to give them to Commissioner Laird, we'll take a quick look at just a sample of the petition and we'll get them down to our administrative assistant, Michelle. Thank you. Thank you.
And are there any questions or anything?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My name is Sean Garrett and I live on Squaw Creek. I'm a retired nurse and mesothelioma is already on the radar, but silicosis that they've been talking about, there, I just quickly Googled it and it's already asbestos, mesothelioma are irreversible and incurable diseases. And they both tend to progress after the exposure and it doesn't matter. And right now, a mesothelioma case is worth 1 million to 1.4 million per legal settlements and 5 million to 11 million for a trial verdict. And that's according to Mealy's litigation report. And that's where we'll get out-of-state lawyers coming and they'll sue everybody. They don't care about Prism Logistics. They'll go after Natrona County, the City of Casper and Wyoming. And I really don't want to be on those ads. Have you been living around Squaw Creek? And, or if your horse has been injured? Or if we lose the rodeos because horses are dying from this? Because it's not just us, it's everything that's living outside. And I don't want to lose what Wyoming's made of or what Casper has been. So that's where I'm saying is people are going to sue when the first person dies and the first horse dies. And that's where all the outside attorneys are going to come because mesothelioma, it's the same thing. They've already got the case reports ready to go and they'll come and take all of our money.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Cheryl Cox. And this is my husband, Mike. We own 42 acres at the base of Casper Mountain Road. It is reclaimed property. I wish you could see it. It's full of asphalt, wild grass growing up between asphalt. So if this is what you get when property is reclaimed, something is severely wrong with that. This property that we own was the last 42 acres of the original 1,000 acres that belonged to Rotary Park. And this is how they left it. We have runoff that comes down from Casper Mountain every year. And it fills a big ravine in the back. And the water drains off and runs through, but I'm concerned about all of this water that goes through Squaw Creek and what's it going to do to the rest of us? The wind is supposed to blow it all over the top of us also. We have to take into account, I'm a registered nurse in Natrona County. We have to take into account all of the effects of COVID over the last three years. People that have been affected by COVID, their lung capacity is not what it should be. And they're never going to be back to normal from it. It's, it's a damage that they will have to live with if they do live with it. So I'm just concerned that when they're, they're talking about land that is supposed to be reclaimed, if this is how they're going to leave it, full of asphalt? I mean, what does it mean to have property reclaimed? Isn't it supposed to be put back to normal? Because they sure didn't put my property back to normal and I have horses on it. The, the property had nothing on it when we purchased it. And we have put a barn, horses, shop, all of that on there, but I just don't know what else I can say about it. It, it's, anybody wants to come see it, let me know. Not reclaimed, full of asphalt. And it's not just asphalt, but there's also metal and different things that you can tell that they have just covered and buried. That's not reclaimed property, should be back to the way they found it. So this is what concerns me about Coates Road and Squaw Creek because they say they're going to put it back to the way it was. What does that mean? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioner and Kim. I, my name is Bonnie Wilson. I live at 4,500 Squaw Creek Road. Previously, we lived on Coates Road for about 33-plus years and then we've moved over to Squaw Creek. I'm here with my apprehensions on the gravel pit operation on Coates Road, and that's commonly known as a school section. Among many impacts to our area residents, I wanted to express my concern for our water and air quality. And I may be being redundant now. There's a wetland area on Squaw Creek which supports not only the wildlife in our area, but provides a filtering system for our water downstream. We have several hundred feet of creek on our property and our well provides for our home and property. There's a significant possibility of the groundwater being contaminated, excuse me, and the loss of our well could be detrimental to our standard of living. Additionally, I don't know what they have planned up above us for dust reduction in this mining operation, but with our daily sustained winds in our area and the gusts numerous occasions, over 60 miles an hour, the dispersment of these silica particles in the air will prevent severe health risks, as you've just heard, not only just to our residents in our area, but to a wider area of Natrona County and Casper. And if they're planning on obtaining water to mitigate this dust migration from our water source, it would deplete it and severely impact our water rights and downstream users. There's numerous other concerns involving this operations, primarily the negative effects on the welfare of the families in a wide area of the mine operation, the increase in traffic. There's several schools and assisted living facility, churches and local businesses. The sections on these leases support the wildlife, recreation and hunting. And it's also been a non-motorized area since, for 40 years that I know of. The gravel mining ratio, my operation could destroy that area. And I'm asking you just to step back and respect the residents' input. Our concerns are legitimate and help us to ask you not to issue any use permits at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Bridgette Brennicky and I just had a couple of questions. I just learned about this whole operation that was going to take place possibly. According to Mr. Tru, there's a lot of transparency that this takes a long time. However, it's been two years apparently that he's been researching it. And I was just curious why we're just finding out about it now. I've lived here for almost 30 years. I'm very proud to be a Casperite. I was really thrilled when the eclipse happened, downtown got all redone, brought in a lot of tourism. It was a great place to bring your family. Now we have this pit that apparently from 71 construction, there's a lot of pits. So why can't we just use one of the existing pits? Or possibly, why can't we use an area that's 30 miles out of town? Perhaps that would cost more transportation cost, but what's the, what's the effect on our town? It's going to cause noise pollution, water pollution, air pollution. We all know about the air and the wind in Casper. And also the lung issues that we were talking about, the silica, that not only happens, you will see a, a result from it relatively quickly, but there's also long-range effects of that. So that's something that we need to think about, I think, as a town, as the residents who we are growing our families here. We want to extend this beautiful place to the rest of the country within reason. Once we open up a pit at the base of the beautiful mountain, this is never going to be the same. Like this woman just said, the reclamation, we all know that that's not exactly, doesn't come back to the exact same way it was before. I just think that we should think about our children and future generations and about the wildlife, the recreation and the, and the residents that live on Coates Road. My understanding is several residents had to pitch in to pave part of Coates Road because the county couldn't pay all of that. I could be wrong. So what happens to those people's investment in that road when heavy equipment is running up and down that every day? That's also noise pollution. This is going to be 24 hours, even if it's not. And I was just curious why Mr. Tru said his piece and then walked out. There's many, many people in the hallway that you guys can't even see. So I just wanted to say, I think it's something that hopefully you guys will consider for the entire town. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Warren Morton. I live at the base of Casper Mountain, a few miles east of the proposed gravel pit that Mr. Tru would like to build. It's on state lands. State land, state land lease has conditions of approval on it that address air quality and reclamation, but most importantly, water and the runoff of water. Water is a natural resource the state of Wyoming cannot afford to mess with because there is so little of it. And I would hope that the county would institute conditions of approval with their permit to Mr. Tru that had very stringent water protection and siltation reduction language in their approval or lease, call it what you would like, to Mr. Tru. That is, the North Platte River provides a very strong economic input into the city and county with its fisheries and I would hate to see that negatively impact. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Reed Mershot. I'm a Natrona County resident and most importantly, I'm a public landowner. Much like everyone here, I think we recognize the importance of public land and public land access in our state and therefore the Western United States. I feel like it's one of the biggest assets that we all have as American citizens and, and residents of the state of Wyoming. So I wanted to reflect on a previous citizen's remarks about Steve Loughlin's claims of all the successful gravel mines around town. To me, that exemplifies a glut of gravel mines and many more opportunities for these companies to go find these gravel mines. I was told by Kyle Tru that he has 20-plus other gravel mines. Why can't these other gravel mines be of focus rather than taking away potential public land access from one of the few areas within a 40-mile radius around Casper that's not on Casper Mountain where we have accessible and developed single-track rails for mountain biking, hiking, running, equestrian use, hunting, et cetera? Furthermore, I want to clear the air now, since we have a pretty big captive audience here, and ask Councilman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nicolaisson and Commissioner Laird if they have any conflicts of interest with Prism Logistics or with Kyle Tru. I would like to know if you currently represent or have represented Kyle Tru or Prism Logistics within the last six months.
I'm a personal injury lawyer. I represent people who get hurt. I don't represent companies. I don't represent gravel mining pits. And I've never represented the Trues. I do know some of the Trues. One of them was on my hockey team for 15 years. That was Tad Tru, really nice young man. He's not involved in this, but I probably know everybody out in this, in this whole audience. And I respect all of you. And I guarantee you, I will give you a fair hearing in this matter. And I will look into it deeply, which I've already started doing, as I think every one of these gentlemen on this commission will do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Nicolaisson?
Mr. Mershot, you know, this is a sensitive topic for me since I saw your post on social media. And yesterday I found out that maybe this pertains to me in terms of ethics. You know, a couple of things. Not only do I not practice law, I closed my law practice. I think that's publicly known, so I do not represent Prism. I've never represented Prism. I haven't represented Kyle Tru in the last six months. I have known the Tru family. I went to high school with your sister. I went to high school with a couple of the Tru family members. My family's been in this town and this community since the 1880s. I know a lot of people in this room. I've represented people in this room and I'm not authorized to disclose or divulge those representations. I've invested, I've written a check to, as an investment, as a member to your company, Solado, last month. I have, I have represented your father and invested in one of his companies about, what, 10, 15 years ago. I have had no involvement in Prism Logistics. I did not have any knowledge of this gravel pit. I have utilized this, this area recreationally with my son and in fat fish bike races many times. I think all that is to say that I believe I can be impartial in this, that I know I don't have a conflict of interest, legal or even perceived. And that at the time this matter is presented in front of this commission, that I fully intend to participate in it on behalf of my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and for clarity, you know, we obviously appreciate your investment, but I think you invest in us because we are ethical people and we choose to do the right thing and go down the right path and do what's right. I will do that unconditional of the relationship. So my intent is not to put anyone on the hot seat here. It's to clear the air as we go forward. And I'd ask all of you that if SF 0044 comes to fruition and a conditional use permit comes across your desk looking to mine gravel on the south side of Casper Mountain, I would encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Daniel Rust. I'm a certified registered nurse and dentist here in Casper, Wyoming. One thing that I know we've mentioned a lot about silica. Silica, according to the National Library of Medicine, is the most plentiful mineral on earth and is the primary constituent in most rocks. In fact, they say in more than ninety-five percent of rocks and stones. The respirable form of silica is small enough to reach the terminal bronchioles and alveoli of the respiratory system, so basically the smaller chambers of the, of the lungs. Typical immune mechanisms cannot clear these particles from the lung, initiating a pathological cycle of inflammation and parinormal damage, and ultimately leads to silicosis. Silicosis is the world's most prevalent occupational lung disease and is characterized by irreversible progressive pulmonary fibrosis, leading to restrictive lung disease. Silicosis is a preventable disease, is a preventable disease with significant morbidity and mortality that has no cure. So we all know how much wind we have here in Casper. According to the Respiratory and Allergic Immune Response Impacts of Gravel Pits Quarry Operations on Adjacent Land Properties, for wind speeds up to twenty miles an hour, which doesn't occur very often, it's usually a lot higher than that. It affects three-point-seven miles. Just the other day, we had winds of up to ninety-nine miles an hour. They say forty-nine-point-seven miles per hour affects up to nine-point-two miles. Well, that's most of Casper. According to a study in, or the census, in 2020, there was about fifteen thousand kids in Casper. I have two kids with pulmonary issues here in Casper. We don't have much opportunities in regards to pediatric pulmonology here in Casper. Where do we go? Four hours to Denver or six hours to Salt Lake? Are we willing to jeopardize the lives of our kids for an uncurable disease in silicosis? For what? We have millions of acres, that's probably incorrect, but, you know, tons of acres outside of Casper where this isn't going to affect us. But ten years down the road to tell your kid you're going to die? It's not something I want on my, on my list of things to do because of silicosis. What are the recommendations from the NEOS recommends? In order to block silica from getting into your lungs, you have to wear an N95 respirator. We all remember COVID, and most of us didn't wear N95 respirators. Someone that worked in the hospital often, those are terrible. And if you already have pulmonary issues, good luck. You know, it's, it's extremely difficult to maintain an N95 respirator on for a significant amount of time. It doesn't matter if I say I love Casper, but I love treating the people here. I love caring for you. I don't want to see more and more individuals, those that smoke have, you know, increased risk factors in addition to silica, to develop silicosis. You know, why risk putting something in town when we can put it outside of town and decrease the risk of an uncurable disease? I want to thank you all for serving us and our community. I appreciate all you do, and I hope that you guys take this matter to heart because it does affect you. It affects me. It affects your kids. And that's not something we want to say to our kids and say, I could have said no to this, but I chose this company over your life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Bentley Teague, and I do not want the gravel pit because then mine and my four other siblings can't play outside, and we just moved to Web Creek Road, and it's west of where they want to do the gravel pit, and we won't be able to play out there because we just got that house not too long ago. And we can't, we won't be able to do stuff out there at all or make dams in the creek that's in our yard. And that's all.
Your name? Thank you, sir.
His name was Bentley Teague.
Bentley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, like, I'm Tricia Teague. I'm his mother. And I just want to expand on that just a little bit since I'm already up here. Yeah, we just moved to the Web Creek neighborhood back in December, actually, so very recently. So upon finding out that this was going to be happening almost in our backyard, it is just a little bit east of us. One of my biggest concerns is if this were to move forward in the future, I have heard that there might be ability to expand west, west and east on the mountain at the base, and then it would be right in front of us. I, like several other people that have said, one of the biggest things that drew us to this area was the peace, the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood. It is pitch black at night. You can see the stars, which is amazing. The light pollution that would happen on a twenty-four-hour run thing would be, would be detrimental to a lot of different things, but the light pollution and the sound and the constantness of everything would be a lot. No one has necessarily made a point, but with the location of where this is at, yes, there are a lot of gravel pits around Casper, but this is south, south, almost, well, southwest, which is where most of our wind blows is from the southwest all of the time. So all of the particles, like they're saying with the silica, would be blowing directly into, I'm sorry, I'm like, obviously very nervous and emotional about this because it's, it's really close to me. But it would just be very detrimental to everyone, not just us that are close to it, but it would be very impactful. Like the guy was just saying, it could, with our wind speeds, it could travel up to sixty miles per hour with the silica. And there was one guy that said at the meeting last Thursday, he was in the Health and Safety Department, I don't remember what his name was, but he was saying, if you took a dime, I don't have a dime on me, I didn't think about it, but if you took a dime and you looked at the president that is on there, the amount, the size of his nose, that is the amount of silica that we are able to have, or like exposure to. This would be so much more than that, and that is where the silicosis would then come because it would be toxic to our systems. And like the other person was saying, children, our future. Casper is beautiful. The mountain is so absolutely stunning to see the views that we have over there. It would ruin, it would be such an eyesore. Tourism is a huge thing for Wyoming in general, just like the, the river and bringing people because it's so beautiful. I actually homeschooled my kids, and we just went on a walk for our first time in the Squaw Creek area, and I could not believe how stunning it was when we were walking down there. Imagine being down there. I'm sure many of you guys have been here for a long time as well as everybody here. But there was so many different colors, and it's just a wide vastness of absolute beauty in this country. And for it to just be ruined with all of this stuff, my, the mining and turning up all of everything and the, what it would destroy. I don't know if you've been over there recently, but all of the water, the marshness that is over there, it's green right now, right on the creek. We were just over there trying to find some species to take pictures of, bald eagles nest, something, just to like have some foot on the ground for this, but there was green on the river, and I was surprised by that. So that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, Commissioner, thank you for your time. I am Jason Knope. I live at forty-seven sixty Ross Ridge Road, and I'm, we're also a member of the Field Creek Ranch, which is located at, on Coates Road. It was established from, with the Coates family in nineteen oh five, so we've been up there for a long time. Our cattle's been grazing and leasing, and we've leased all those grazing lands for the past hundred years for our cattle to be roaming over. We have a chunk of land behind that state land, so the property that Mr. True is looking at, and he has tests pitted through, would rip right through the center of our, our family's ranch. We have water rights on the upper pasture. We have water rights on the state land, and we have water rights on our lands. We have nine water rights within this location of Section Thirty-five and Section Thirty-four. We have significant water rights because we irrigate our fields on Coates Road to feed our cattle throughout the winter. With the mountain and everyone on the west side of the community, they do live off of this water that comes off the mountain, and it is a complicated water system. We, our company has studied the water and our, our geological throughout this county, all the way from way out north of Beebe Brooks to the mountain. And our, our county sits on top of the Cody shale, which is our, our layer that stops water from going down. So if you go north of town, you can drill through the Cody shale, sixty to a hundred feet down. It's a weathered shale, so it has a saturated zone much greater than you see a saturated zone on the mountains. When you go closer to the mountain, the Cody shale gets harder, as obviously the mountain is the shale coming out of the ground. So when, there's, there's four components to our water system that comes off of that mountain. We have two storage systems. We have a conduit system, and then we have the distribution to our, our family's ranches. So you have a storage system of the mountain, which collects the snow and the water along the faces of the mountain, brings that water down to the bottom of the, the mountain, which is at the toe, right at the slope, right at the alluvial deposits of the mountain, which is material that's come off that mountain for the last hundred years. It's deposited there. That is the material that Kyle has investigated and dug through and is wanting to mine. It is a silt material with a rock in it. It typically is a very good material to mine. It also is our second storage of our water system. So the water comes off the mountain at a very fast rate as it melts and it collects from the face of the mountain. It hits the alluvial deposits. At that point, it moves at a rate of two to three minutes per feet, so that's our second storage system. If he wants to go in there and mine thirty to forty feet of that alluvial deposit, that's a lot of storage water that we depend on through July, August, September, October, November. And then the water starts to regenerate from rains and snows. When you look at our water system, it, it hits that alluvial deposit and it travels at a slow rate till it finds a gravel seam. The gravel seams don't typically go in one direction. They go in whatever direction the glaciers decide to posit the gravel seams at. So you could be on one side of a high ridge, and there'd be seventy feet of the alluvial deposit before you get to the Cody shale, and you would think that water would drain to the left side of that ridge, but that actual gravel seam will pull that water to the other side of that ridge. So if somebody goes there and mines and changes the topography of that, now you've totally changed the dispersion and storage of all of that watershed that everyone depends on. Once the water hits the gravel seam, it, it takes it to, that's the conduit, it takes it to where we have the water rights. That's, it moves at a faster rate, usually looking at anywhere from fifty to two-hundred feet per minute if it hits the right gravel, gravel seam. These are very hard to find in an engineering study, and Kyle's right. Once he goes to permitting the mine, the main mine, there is going to be significant scrutiny on a lot of tests, engineering tests, and we will be right there looking at them all to make sure that he's looking at the right stuff, and we are also notifying the state engineer's office at this time because this is a significant risk to our survival and operation of the ranch. All of our water comes off of that land that he's looking to mine, right through the center of our ranchland. So he would significantly change the flow of the water coming from the mountain to the, to the residents to use the water. With that, once, once the flow is changed, it can never come back. Doesn't matter how much money he wants to throw at this, and it doesn't matter how much reclamation he thinks he can do. Once you move the, move the, the distance and direction of that water that's flowing through that gravel, it's gone. And then we're fighting on the back end, not on the front end. And this is a very significant risk because these are areas that can be missed in all of the studies that they possibly can do because it's not a formation like you see north of town where you can drill sixty, eighty feet, you hit the shale, you have a saturated zone, you punch through that shale, you get the aquifer. If you go another five to six hundred feet, there's another layer of shale. You punch through that one, and that's the second layer of aquifer, that's where the best water is if you want to drill out north of town.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
You're out of time tonight.
Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your accessibility to you guys. I have talked to you each individually, and I just wanted to let everyone know that this is a complicated watershed, and so there is a significant risk with any mining operation. Thank you.
And, and your professional training is?
Environmental engineering.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Michael Fernald and live on Coates Road with my wife. County Commissioners, thank you for allowing us all the floor today. Your openness to community engagement is not just commendable, it's essential. I just want to put on the record that I did try to reach out to Prism Logistics on February twenty-third and never received a reply. I was interested more in what they, you know, had to say and find out more information. You know, with respect to the leases, I'm not sure how big the other mines that were mentioned earlier, how many acres they are, but the total number of leases on these, I believe is over a couple thousand. So this is a significant chunk of land. Last Thursday, I echoed the principle of the greater good. It was a phrase that was invoked by the State Office of Lands and Investments regarding the leases. While it's intended to justify decisions for benefit, too often it veils actions that infringe on individual rights born of unintended consequences. The school section leases exemplify such misguided applications where pursuing the greater good obscures more than it illuminates. Coates Road, among others, stand to suffer due to increased heavy traffic. A semi-truck causes twenty-five-hundred times more wear on the roads than a sedan, which, traveling a gravel road daily, breaks down one ton of gravel per mile annually. Given this significant wear, we must consider if the high maintenance costs justify serving just a few under the guise of the greater good. Property values, the cornerstone of an individual's wealth, face a threat from the proposed operations. Diane Height's research at Auburn University paints a stark picture, the potential decline of up to thirty percent within a ten-mile radius. From Realtytrack.com, there are over twenty-four thousand homes in Casper with a median estimated price of two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars, making Casper's residential real estate conservatively valued around six-point-six billion dollars. Even a slight decrease of two percent in property value equals a hundred-and-thirty-two million dollars lost by Casper and Neptuna County residents, a long payback for the royalties valued at sixty cents per ton. The median listing price of homes, by the way, is not two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars, it's four-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars. It's a narrative where the many bear the cost while the few reap the benefits, all under the guise of the greater good. The dispersion of fine silicates into our air represents a tangible health concern. These particles travel eighteen miles in a twenty-five mile-per-hour breeze, also known as Tuesday in Casper. It's a silent threat that could leave a lasting mark on our well-being. Water rights, a critical lifeline facing uncertain future. The encroachment upon senior water rights carries implications far beyond the immediate vicinity, hinting at disputes that will soon drain resources and the spirit alike. Casper Mountain, a key aspect of our scenery and a draw for visitors, faces irreversible alteration for mining. Such visual impacts could diminish our city's charm, affecting tourism and our ability to attract skilled professionals like physicians, highlighting losses beyond just economic. The shortlist of concerns weaves a narrative of a county crossroads. Each thread, integral to the fabric of our community, is at risk of unraveling under the guise of the greater good. So what does serve the greater good? Preserving Neptuna County's beauty serves the greater good. Preserving our water rights serves the greater good. Preserving the public's wealth and being good stewards of county resources serves the greater good. The years leading up to the French Revolution serve as a cautionary tale. Inaction and monitoring the situation in the face of clear signs led to monumental upheaval. The aristocracy's passive stance marked by a preference for observation over action ultimately accelerated their downfall. This historical lesson implores us not to repeat past mistakes and not to stand idly by monitoring the situation. The state's handling of the leases reflects a failure to fully appreciate the broader consequences of these decisions. This isn't just an oversight, it's a significant lapse in the responsible management of our state's resources. Commissioners, the power to chart a different course lies within your grasp. The concerns voiced today are not solely mine, but resonate with the heartbeat of our county. We stand at the edge of a potential calamity that can be averted with foresight, courage, and action. I urge you with the utmost respect and urgency to consider our trajectory. Until the conditional use permit is applied for, please contact the Governor and State Land Investment Board, advocate for the recession of leases, protect our county's legacy rights and citizens. Let us not wait for the full brunt of these consequences to manifest before acknowledging the path we could have taken. The moment for action is now. A call, not just for the greater good, but also for the people of Natrona County. Thank you for your time, dedication, and your service to our community's well-being.
Thank you.
Michael Reed, uh, I live on Garden Creek. Um, ditto, what he said, that was, um, but uh also anyone that's lived on the base of the mountain um for most of their life. The, the weather and the wind is exceptionally different than even in town. So those other gravel picks, pits that Mr. Loughlin was discussing, um, don't, they're not subjected to the wind that we're talking about where this pit is going to be. And from my research, the filing of paperwork to the state means that you can keep that gravel pit open indefinitely. So the idea of reclamation on that is probably not even true. Cause the, the pits that Mr. Loughlin was discussing um that were reclaimeded were reclaimeded eighty to a hundred years ago. So.
Can you adjust the microphone?
Oh, so those, the, the pits that he was talking about are currently active. The reason why they're currently active is because you file some paperwork with the state and it stays open. So um anyways, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Bruce Coats, I'm one of the owners, manager of Field Creek Ranch. And where we're at, uh, I wanted to reiterate on what Jason Op had to tell you on that. I've uh watched, uh, we had a gentleman up there that built a house, decided he was gonna dam up the creek and dig, make a pit. So I was down there trying to run on my irrigation and I have no water. So I drive up the road, I get up there, he's got a big backhoe up there. Creek runs down, it drops into hole, can't see, goes into a complete fog, it's gone. So now what do we do? So I call the water commissioner, I get the sheriffs up there, we get him stopped, we get him shut down. He had no permit, no, no, those are our water rights, our first water right on Field Creek is, 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 that's been in for a hundred and some years in the family. So I'm without water, it's starting to affect everything. It affects everybody down below uh that's uh follows uh down Coats Road, uh, the forest place and those. Because even in the wintertime, where the diversion is, I turn that back down to them to charge their springs. So there, we, we share that water, I share our water rights. But so anyway, it looked like it was pretty bad hope what we're gonna do. But I, I unfortunately, I've got a big shale pit, a lot of bentonite and all in it down there. So I was going down and digging it up and bringing it up there, dumping it in that hole. Finally, we got it to come back. And then by that time we went and got a lot of bentonite, we just poured and poured and poured, 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 took a lot of the silt, put it back in. I can't say we stopped at a hundred percent, but the flow's back, you know, we got the flow back, it's been fifteen years. You know, in just a, just a matter of seconds, when he dug into that, four or five million dollars worth, or million uh years of silt, when one scoop went bang. That's guard and, and the Squaw Creek, same thing, that feeds everybody on Squaw Creek down. They cut that one, there, it goes, it goes down south, those people are without water. Now, it's take a while, and you'll never get that creek to come back unless you can plug that hole. I mean, I've been in the oil industry for many, many years. And you're drilling and you hit a bug, you hit a void, ain't enough water in the world to fill, Jim knows. But anyway, I just wanted to reiterate on that, it's so, so uh the alluvials that we have, it's where they come out, uh, our houses and some of the barns and stuff, they're fed on alluvial flow out by Artesian, where they just come up and come out of the ground. Can't tell you where that seam comes from, but at some point in time they surface. We have hillsides up above our irrigation pond that flow in the summertime, it's always wetland. Much like uh in Squaw Creek down there, they get that Webb Creek same way, it's cut, hasn't come out. It's real critical up there, I, like I said, uh, you know, it's, it would be a class action suit to the state. If they cut into it, the, the state probably, we get that thirty million reserve fund, you know, to try to, that would be, I mean, that's what, you know, they'd have to dig into it because they, they'd have cut the whole residence out of water, so. Guys be the judge, so thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sheila Jalahars and I am forty-three years old, I've lived in Casper, Wyoming all of my life. Um, I have lived in River West over by Oregon Trail School. I have lived in Barn Dun, I have lived in Paradise Valley, and I now reside in Wolf Creek. We moved to Wolf Creek three years ago and we moved in July of two thousand twenty-one. And after the first winter there, I thought, why in the heck did we move to this place? This is the most windiest place in Casper, Wyoming. Um, but when the summer came, I realized why it was so beautiful um and why we, we decided to stay. Um, it, Wolf Creek is one of the most beautiful areas, the mountain, that scenery is one of the most beautiful areas. Um, we go out walking, riding bikes, um, rollerblading. We see so many people out and about, um, we are actually east of where the gravel pit is going to be, or hopefully not be. Um, we uh struggle with the wind. Um, this past winter of two thousand twenty-three, we got hit with those snowstorms in March and April. I live on Forty-Fifth Street and Forty-Sixth Street gets the brunt of everything. Um, they had snow clear up to their, um, and I don't laugh, I'm sorry if anybody's in that area, it was horrible. Um, but we, they had snow clear up to their um rooftops. And I have never seen the wind blow so bad in that area, uh, I mean in Casper. Um, and it especially blows in that area and listening to everybody's concerns tonight um really makes me concerned even more because of the health issues. Um, one thing I really haven't heard mentioned is the um insurance claims that could possibly come from this because of the gravel being blown and windows being broke or um chipped. Um, not to mention, you know, vet bills because of the animals that will be hit with gravel. Um, and I will tell you that I do work for the True Company, um, True Companies. And they are not a part of this, so I want to make everybody aware that True Companies is not a part of this. Um, I, I know of Kyle True and Deemer True and they are good people, I will tell you this. Um, they're very humble and kind. Um, I do believe that they will listen to everybody's speeches tonight and moving forward. And they may take into consideration um because of the kind of people that they are. They do care about this community, they have been here a long time. Um, I am telling you, I am opposing this because of all the issues stated tonight. Um, but I do want you to know that they are very humble and kind people. Um, and so please take that into consideration that, you know, they're just trying to do their business. Um, I understand that it's a huge um inconvenient for everybody. But um I do believe that maybe, you know, this is in, that it, whatever it comes, um, I do appreciate that everybody came tonight because I am on board that, that is a beautiful area and the gravel pit should not, like they mentioned tonight, there's other places to dig gravel. Um, and that area is just not one of them, so thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I will renew my, at the shooting range, chairman. Oh man, where do I start? I don't know, I mean, everybody said.
Your name.
Oh, Roberto Farz, I live on Coats Road, right above Bruce and my neighbor. Um, first of all, I want to say I am so proud of this community and all of these great people with different backgrounds that come together as a community and neighborhood. Cause this is how this country was created, with community, neighborhoods, resilience, and that's why we're the best country um, uh, in the world. I moved here from Italy because I love the constitution. I get emotional every time I talk about the constitution because it's such a, a great paper where um, it deals with human behavior and which human behavior never changes. And so those forefathers were so astute to give us a voice here all tonight. In other places, we couldn't even talk. So thank you, Bruce, and he is a good man because he could probably raise more hay and stuff with the water. But when I run out of water during the summer months, I have no water to drink. He opens up his, the diversion that he doesn't have to and gives water to my family. So he's a great neighbor. All right, so where do I start? So thank you, Bruce. Um, today we got to address a pressing, I'm gonna try to make a, put a different um spin on this. On thing, a lot of things have been said and I agree with everything everybody said. Um, the, a pressing issue that threatens the very essence of our community. The potential establishment of a gravel pit on a piece of land that holds immense value. And I know you heard this, to our wildlife, nature, recreational activity. This land cherished by many for hiking, dog walking, horseback riding, and bike riding not only contributes to our physical health, but also plays a vital role in the emotional well-being of our community. As we contemplate the possibility of sacrificing this precious land for the sake of profit. And I'm not against business, I like to make money because I gotta pay the bills. But I'm also the one to go put a pig farm downtown next to the ice rink. You know? We, we must recognize and oppose the detrimental effects that a gravel pit would have on our environment, wildlife, and quality of life. And I'm gonna get a little bit more into the quality of life issue. The land that we currently enjoy for outdoor activities is not just a parcel of earth. It, we're a little speck in the universe, but it's, it means so much to us because this is where we live. And this is where we um, we have to try to stay healthy. And in order to stay healthy, we need a lot of sunshine, we need good water, and we need physical activity for our mental health. Um, we need to be more connected to nature and not away from it. Actually, I would think, how can we get another five or six of these state lands? So more people can go out there and walk and, and get their dog and ride their horses and be healthy, get sunshine. Then you can make, make vitamin D, then your mental health will be better, your immunity will be better. It, it, it's for a stronger community, we need to have our community strong and healthy. We need to prevent, not try to, plus we have enough gravel pits, I heard from the guy, I didn't even know. But we don't have enough pieces of state land to go have the community go do this stuff. That's what we need to focus as a community, like more places where people can go get healthy. Oh, so lastly, in conclusion, I urge each and every one of you to oppose the establishment of a gravel pit on this beautiful piece of land that holds significance for our wildlife, nature, recreational activities, and property values, which we've all been working hard for. And you know, what do you do, you can't, you can't go anywhere, so then um. And uh by raising our voices and taking a stand against this threat to our health, to our well-being of our kids and everybody in town. Cause I'm not, I'm right there, yeah, it'll affect me, but I think it will affect so many people who go out there. And all my neighbors, and we welcome all the bikes and we help them, we love to see people out there to do stuff. This is, America is so free that you can do this. Uh, some places you can't even go on state land and even walk or get out of the car. It's like the Hunger Games almost, you know, so. Um, so, um, and I love living here. I don't regret one time, I burned a ship when I landed in New Jersey, oh boy. All right, so um, please consider not doing this because I don't think it's a good idea for anyone. And the trues are great, I understand, but sometimes you gotta balance the issues and do the right thing. Cause it's, it's a matter of not just destroying a, a plastic bucket, it's human lives and I'm pro, I'm team humanity, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chairman, commissioners, appreciate the time to speak tonight, my name's.
Hang on just a second, can I see uh folks raising your hands if you still want to speak tonight, just to get an idea? All right, um, great. And a reminder on the applause, uh, we could applaud everybody, I'm sure, but uh let's just keep going, thank you, sir, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Casey Cheesebro, I do not live uh on Coats Road or the Squaw Creek area, I live in the eastern part of Casper, uh, over on the east side. And I moved here about four and a half years ago with my family uh to work for the Bureau of Land Management and the Wildland Fire Program. One of the things we get uh in the Wildland Fire Program is one hour a day for physical training, right? To go PT, stay fit for the upcoming fire season. On my first day on that job, uh, the person that was retiring out of the position or a position adjacent to mine said, hey, did you bring your running shoes? I said, yeah, I did actually, I threw them in. He said, uh, jump in, I want to show you a special place, right? So my first day, this is where he took me, he took me to Squaw Creek to that school section. Uh, we went for a run out there and he was right, it's a very special place. Uh, worthy, worthy of protection, I think Kyle True used the word significant need, right? And the gentleman that just spoke, there's a significant need in our community to have these open spaces where a community can go maintain their physical health, their mental health, get outside. And, and then the value, I think there's Mr. Frontero spoke earlier about the value conversation. Yes, there's value in gravel, but there's value in these open spaces. Part of value is, is things that are limited, right? And so limited supply, I think ups the value of things. We, we have a very limited supply given the amount of open space around Casper for public access to single track trails, to areas we can run, bike, hike, those types of things. And so, so that makes this even more valuable, right? This uh, this area that we have. And when I look, uh, you know, the, the discussion, I appreciate the real estate numbers, the property value numbers. And I look at the communities around Wyoming that maintain their property values, that maintain their desirability even during recessions, even during economic downturns. They're the places that have preserved and conserved and provided access to the open spaces adjacent to their communities, not the places that have mined those, those areas. And so I do, I do appreciate Mr. True's comments, um, you know, that, that this will be thought out, there will be discussion, there will be all those things. Uh, there, there needs to be. But when it comes to these, these other, these other gravel mines in the area, I don't think, it was brought up early, I don't think any of those are roughly two thousand acres. And right now, I understand, we don't have the proposal in front of us, we don't know exactly how many acres they're looking to mine. But, but I don't think, I don't think I'm, I'm, I'm in error here and thinking that it's possible they could want to develop all roughly fifteen-hundred to two thousand acres of that state land if, if the resource is of value and they get going there. So I don't think that's a fair comparison. He, he also mentioned the need, as we get into that process, to, to walk and not run, right? I think the other, the other folks that like to, to trail run or run ultramarathons or things in, in the room would agree. Even more important than that, knowing when to walk and not run is knowing when to stop, knowing when things are, are so bad that you need to just stop. And so commissioners, I ask you, as we get into this process, that you keep that in mind, that we also need to know when it's time to just stop in this process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Anna Canope. Um, I live on forty-seven sixty Ross Ridge Road and it's in the middle of nowhere between Webb Creek and Coats Road. And I just want to say right now, they have dug a test pit behind our house and it is already destroying our well, our well is only ten feet deep. We don't have much water already and we're already seeing the effects of it. There's no regulations right now, I know that, there's nothing we can do. But you're, he's killing us, I mean, one family at a time, it's gonna go. We won't move, not only because we can't sell the place if they build that pit. My family's ashes are there, we're fourth generation, if my kids stay here, we'll be fifth. My family's been here since nineteen oh five, it's huge. Like this is one family. I know it can come to litigation, we have no money, like we can't fight the trues. Like it's not fair, we can't fight that money, this is all we can do is ask you guys to not approve it. So please don't.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Laird.
I just feel compelled to say one thing, and that's this. State land keeps being mentioned, but guess who owns the state land? The people, thank you.
Well, I, I guess I would say, um, having fought battles before uh against the Office of State Lands on behalf of clients on grazing leases, their only concern is money. And they will tell you that they have a duty to maximize uh money for school trust beneficiaries. Don't, don't give up, but, but it's, it's a, it's a problem. Um, I'm just want you to be aware of that. Um, Mr. Wingerger.
Mister Chairman and county commissioners, you know, when I first got here, I'd heard about this gravel situation. I was gonna, I thought to myself, I should be the first one to jump up and let them know how I feel. And then I thought, no, I'm gonna listen and figure and hear both sides of the issue. So I've been sitting back there listening and hearing both sides of the issue. And then I thought to myself, you know, it's just, I want, I would have nothing but respect for the trues, Kyle True. They used to be clients of mine, yours. They used to be clients of mine years ago, when I was selling insurance. But I just, I just don't think this is the place for it. You know, how many times have you seen outer belts shut down because of the wind and trucks pull, roll over? And, you know, with that new, um, that new church out there, I guess they call it a temple, uh, not, but anyway, uh, it's just, you know, there's some very, I was out there about 3:00 this afternoon driving around, and there's a lot of expensive houses out there, and the cities, it butts up right up against the city. And I'll tell you, if I was up there where you folks are, I'd certainly vote against this project. I just want you to know, but I, I think it's tough to vote against Kyle because I, I like the trues, I'm like some of these other folkses back here, that the trues have done so much for this city and state. But I just don't think this is the place that they ought to put this pit. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Peyton Zeroff, I sit on, uh, Cabin Creek Road. Um, I just wanted to express that I'm not for this, uh, pit, but I just wanted to give some of my expertise, I come from the mining industry, I spent about 14 years in, uh, MSHA regulated industry, so, uh, I'm an instructor. Uh, I just have a problem with the silica stuff that's been kind of expressed, and I just want to give a little bit of knowledge out there. Uh, MSHA has jurisdiction over an active mine site, uh, they have a 50 milligram per cubic meter of, uh, exposure for miners on the mine site, that's, uh, they can be exposed to an eight-hour period. So that's extremely low, uh, silica exposure, and I'm just worried that we're giving a bad persona to the mining industry right now. And I just want to make sure people understand that MSHA regulates mines very, very heavily, especially when it comes to dust. Um, I just don't want people leave here, think every mine is a bad thing. Uh, mines are extremely important to our industries around here, everything we do has rocks in it, uh, pavement, concrete, everything has, uh, rock product in it. So, um, I get why they want to put it so close to town, uh, because the transportation cost is reduced, um, but I'm just wanna kind of air out, uh, some of my knowledge, it was bothering me sitting back there, listening to silica stuff. Like I said, I've been in the industry for a while now, uh, been in rock crushers where there was silica exposure, we were doing monitoring every single day to make sure we're below that permissible exposure limit, uh, so basically the visible emissions would be very, very low, um, when they're before that 50 milligrams per cubic meter of air. Right now, there's a proposal on MSHA regulations that's actually gonna cut that in half, it's gonna be 25 milligrams per cubic meter of air is a proposed, proposed regulations on that. So, um, again, I'm not for this location, I am for the mining industry, I'm not for this location, so I just wanted to air that out there. So, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Nancy Pickett, and, um, I live on Kingsborough, I live, so I would live just west, or east, excuse me, of this pit, but I'm here to represent some of the local communities, clubs that are organized. For example, um, the mountain biking with what's gonna be going on, on the mountain this summer, we are having difficulty trying to find places to have races. And the only place we were gonna be able to have our normal, um, we've been, that fish has been going on for years, um, was Squaw Creek. And if that's taken away, you are taking away so much recreational land from people, not only from mountain bikers, from, but these clubs that work very hard, and the community is heavily into supporting these communities. We have awesome support from our communities, and these are just things that could go away because of spaces like Squaw Creek that is available to the community and for people to use, much less the health issues that might cause. But as, um, Rabudor Far says, health, what is that value versus the dollar for just not, for building something closer to the site, other than going a little farther out of town and having to pay a little more for the travel? So I wanted to represent some of those clubs, and to mention that you can take a lot away just from the community, and Squaw Creek is one of those places that you can go to do outdoor recreation. We used to have a place out by Hat Six, but that was given over to another group, another family, that no longer is accessible. Right now, the mountain is not gonna be accessible for the summer, so we're having to cut back dramatically, and if you take Squaw Creek away, you're not just taking it away, you're taking it from the whole community use. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, I guess I'll finish up. Bill, it's Dick, you guys, Judy Jones, uh, 335 North Eight Mile, I think you guys heard everybody here tonight, and I think there's a lot to consider. Um, I want to take you to the land use plan revision. Go back and read through that a little bit, guys, it's very vague, and, um, I think by this room tells you, this is a no-go. And, uh, if it ends up in courts, it's just gonna get nasty. But if you think about it, Rose and I drove up there, what, two weeks ago Saturday, and we looked around, it's beautiful. I mean, she got out of the truck, because you can't go in there with a car, you know me, I'm lazy, if I can't drive in, I'm not going. She did, she went over the hill, she found a house that's gonna be downwind from this. Okay, downwind, they're in a ditch. That mine is gonna destroy their home. And you know, we have in our land use plans, heavy industrial, light industrial, I mean, didn't we mess up when we put a car crushing outfit in the middle of agricultural? Everybody gets flat tires out there that lives by Zero Road. You know, we've, we've, we've got this land use plan, granted, it's messed up, Rose and I have offered to help, uh, get this right a little better so that people don't feel like you're picking winners and losers. And, you know, just by Peter's words tonight tells me, we're gonna be, we're gonna be losers. Because this is gonna go through whether we like it or not. And, you know, he's safe for another couple years, so he don't really give a damn. I do. You know, these guys, I went out there in Harold and met some of the people over there, there's a woman that lives in, has a, lives in a wheelchair all the time, she won't even be able to go out and ri, you know, ride around on her horse, her husband puts her on a horse to ride. If that's gone, it's gone. You know, you guys got Rotary Park over there for the high class, why not leave this one alone? They can go all along the mountain, I looked, I pulled it up on Google, there's 1,000 places where that could go. You know? And for the Knife River that's over here off the highway, it's not surrounded by people, surrounded by businesses. That kind of thing belongs in light and heavy industrial, and definitely downwind. So, I guess I'm just kind of giving you guys a warning, if you guys do not stop this, I am going to be on your butt until election time. So, anyway, I know Dallas will do the right thing, I know Dave North will do the right thing, it's you three I worry about.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for your time, I know you guys have been here a long time. I just have a quick question. My name is Mason Sale. I've been a resident of Casper for over almost 40 years. Um, my question is really, how did Kyle True get to the, what steps did he take to get where he was right now as far as doing samples and already digging and doing that process to figure out if it was a viable, um, lease or not? Did that come from the county as far as issuing permits for him to do that? Or how did that process happen?
That process happened without the knowledge or involvement of the county. A landowner, the state of Wyoming, uh, has available, um, things like leases for different types of use, special use, grazing use, uh, mining leases. And, uh, he, um, apparently, or his company apparently submitted the, um, stuff that was required for the issuance of that lease, and he has that lease. So the county hasn't been involved and isn't involved at this point.
So it's just a matter, he got the lease and then he can just go and dig already?
The landowner gives him permission to conduct that type of activity irrespective of our zoning that we have.
And it doesn't, they didn't have to do any kind of public anything with that as far as them doing the discovery? I know, I know they, they can do the leasing, but as far as the land itself, it was not even allowed to have motorized vehicles on there, right? So was he breaking the law of doing that?
My, I don't know what the requirements and the, what it allows him to do, um, but I'm assuming he is doing it under authority of whatever the permission the state's giving him.
Okay, that's right. I'll have to do more discovery on myself than on what the state allows for that, so appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
I might add, Mr. Chairman, the state did allow him to do that, gave him a permit to make tests. And he, I think he explained it fairly well, that what he has to go through, but the county has had nothing to do with any of this. We found out about, about, about the same time you all did.
Um, my name is Barb Mary Hugh, and I live off of Belmont Street. And, um, my concern is, I went to the meeting last Thursday, and if it hadn't been for a post on, uh, Facebook, I wouldn't have known anything about this. And I think the thing that kind of stuck with me tonight, and it has not left a very good feeling with me, is that Mr. True, um, came in, spoke to us, and said that one of his goals, and it always has been, is to be transparent. My understanding is that is not the truth. Uh, from the meeting that we went to last Thursday night, we learned that this was been a process that's been in the works for over two years. If that is true, and transparency was an important part of this, why didn't at least the homeowners and landowners in that area know something about this two years ago? If it hadn't been for a gentleman who had been in his living room, I believe he said it was on, um, the 14th of February, and happened to see some, um, vehicles up in that area, who then called the sheriff's office to find out what was going on, because it was on the school part, and that does say that there is no, um, motorized vehicles up there. And so some calls were made and things like that. And late that night, Mr. True showed up at his house, and basically, at the end of their conversation, what the gentleman said was that Mr. Cool, uh, Mr. Cool, excuse me, Mr. True, kind of smugly had stated, well, this is a done deal. And so I really question, and I challenge you, if Mr. True is going to be transparent, anything going forward that you guys look with, look at it with a fine-tooth comb and find out if it is transparent or not. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tracy Lamont, 9855 Crimson Dawn Road, I've got three handouts here, I'll start with Dallas and just pass them down.
Do you need to get three pages?
No, just one page of each. Uh-huh. Yes, starting with the map, and then, uh, there's an excerpt out of, uh... If you bear with me while you get the maps. Yeah, they go to...
They're, they're all the same, so just take the top one and pass it over.
There you go. Um, my first question on the map, and I, I'm sure you're not prepared to answer this tonight, but for the benefit of the people in the room, I, I think there's some confusion that needs to be cleaned up, but, uh, is a school section 640 acres, or can it be bigger? Does anyone know the answer to that?
Say that again.
The section of land is 640.
640, so, this is Mr. True's, or Prism Logistics outlining for, uh, the properties he has tied up there, they're all state lands. So that brings up the next question, are all these, uh, that are listed on the map in blue and highlighted, are they all, uh, zone MR1 for the county, or do you know that at this point? Uh, every one of them? I've been told the, the one in section 30 might be questionable, and if that's the case, then they may, if it doesn't fall under, uh, the uses on the chart that I gave you out of your, uh, 2022 zoning or, uh, resolution, on it, there's only, uh, uh, for extractive industries, there's only three classifications, one's a RAM, one's a UA, one's an MR1, thank God, this isn't all MR2 lands, but, and then the fourth one is, uh, uh, an HR, or an H1, excuse me, I believe.
HI.
I don't have my glasses here, I lost them somewhere between meeting time starting and now. Oh, there they are. Thanks, Tony. I'm, uh, I'm getting feeble in my old mind here, so, and it, that would be an HI on it, so that would be the fourth call for conditional use permit on him, so. Then my, uh, my third handout has to do with a state statute, what surfaced in some of the, uh, Facebook posts and comments, uh, that's going on with, or was going on with Senate File 0044, which, my understanding, all the amendments that were made to that and proposed by Harshman and O'Neil and Burkhardt, all were voted out as non-concurrents by the Senate. That happened yesterday late. Um, so, any hope for amendments for, to Senate File 0044, went up in smoke, it looks like, uh, late yesterday afternoon or early evening.
Tracy? Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
I just got an update, uh, just a second ago about Senate File 44, it's in a conference committee between the House members, Representative Burkhardt, Harshman, uh, Larson, and, uh, Cooper, Senators Cooper, Ellis, and Jones. And this says, please encourage folks to reach out and encourage members of the committee to vote in favor of the amended bill, uh, which, as I understand it, um, provides for and preserves local control.
That's good. Would that mean the Commissioners are back into the picture then on it, or?
It says they meet tomorrow at 9:30, too, so you might, uh, think about reaching out first thing in the morning or tonight.
Okay. So when reading 15, or 185201, an excerpt out of that, it said, "No zoning resolution or plan shall prevent any use or occupancy reasonably necessary to the extraction or production of the mineral resources in or under any land subject thereof." How is a person supposed to interpret that one? Does that mean that that overrides, uh, anything you would come back as far as a conditional use permit requirement saying they can't move forward?
Uh, there's a Wyoming Supreme Court case from 1995 that says that, um, uh, sand, gravel, um, and similar type minerals, um, are not, uh, applicable, or this provision isn't applicable to the extraction of those types of minerals. So the county does have jurisdiction, um, under a conditional use permit scheme, uh, so this, this sentence in the statute would not apply to a proposed sand and gravel pit.
So is that a Wyoming statute you're, you're in reference to, Mr. Nicholas?
No, it's, um, it's a case, uh, called River Springs Limited Liability versus Board of County Commissioners of Teton County.
Okay. On it, so, that, that helps me a little bit on it, so, that and then, I, uh, the time?
Yeah, but, so just, just wrap it up.
Real close, Dallas and you got put on the spot, I'm gonna put Dave and, or Mr. North and Jim, uh, Melanie and Mr. Frill, do you guys have any conflicts that get in your way if it moves forward to a conditional use permit hearing? That's only out of fairness to Dallas and to Peter, let that question be asked.
To be perfectly transparent, about eight years ago, I did work for Deemer, true, doing environmental and safety compliance. doing environmental and safety compliance work. That was quite a while ago. That was not related to any of this stuff that's on here. And so, um, as far as being straightforward and honest, that's what I did. So.
To answer you, Tracy, no. Um, and also, section thirty is, uh, Urban Act.
With that, I'm opposed with, I'm opposed for, for health, water, aesthetics, and economical reasons on it, which are fairly obvious. Uh, you know, Casper Mountain and its foothills are to Casper what the Grand Tetons and the foothills are to the folks of Jackson, Wyoming on it. And we don't need the face of our mountain tore up or the, the base of it or whatever else. And I'll just leave it at that. The trees are good people. They've been good to our family down through the years, but there's a time and place for everything, and this isn't the place for a gravel pit. So please, moving forward, if you have any opportunity, uh, oppose it, step on it, and put the fire out.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Frill?
Uh, Tracy, just for the record, I have no conflicts on this at all.
Thank you, Steve.
Uh, one comment I have, Mr. Nicolason. Mr. Nicolason's a genius. You probably don't know that unless you know him well, but his case he cited specifically says that sand and gravel isn't protected by that statute, because that statute's a problem. And I was reading it today. And, uh, it has, like a lot of law, it can be interpreted different ways depending on who reads it. But I'm really, I'm really proud of Mr. Nicolason for pointing this case out to you all, because it's very important if you were to hire your own lawyer to look into this matter. So, um, thank you, Mr. Nicolason.
Well, um, this is actually legal counsel provided this, uh, to me. So we were talking about it. So thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney.
Good evening, um, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Doug Haupt. Um, I live just west of, of, uh, this proposed mine, and, um, I think that the state needs to look this over. I mean, I would like to see it squashed in the state, because when they put these leases together years and years and years ago, they weren't, there was no housing around. I mean, it was just prairie and ag. And to put this where they're, where they're suggesting putting it, will, you know, we don't look like Gillette. We don't look like Rock Springs. We have a mountain, and that's our jewel. And that's the difference in Wyoming. Buffalo has mountains, Sheridan has mountains, Casper has mountains. Um, we recreate up there. I'm a steward of all these creeks you're talking about. They originate, they run through my land. I have a ranch. I don't, I control and own about five thousand acres right above this. And I border a mile and a half of this state land, um, right above it. Um, we don't build roads, we don't do two tracks, we don't, um, we don't disturb, we're good stewards of the mountain. And you guys represent us as stewards of Natrona County. And I hope and pray that you guys look at this hard. I know you will. You're all in this, because you're, you've lived here a long time, uh, as you've, you've just talked about. And I think you, you really believe what everybody in the audience believes about this. We can have industry, you have to have industry, you have to have tax base, you have to have all that stuff. But I think this is something that the, uh, public uses, and, and it just, it just would be a shame to, it's just asinine to me to think that we're gonna put a gravel pit at the base of Casper Mountain. You know, well, you go down by Gillette and you drive there and that big scar that they have. Uh, we don't want that. I don't think anybody wants that. And I think the Trues, a lot of good stuff's been said about the Trues, and I agree a hundred percent with that. I think they're gonna get, get the idea that this isn't worth it, I hope. Is there any way you guys can look into squashing the state lease? That's what I think it needs to go to the state. And if the state wants money, my recommendation is to have the county buy this land and make a county park out of it. I mean, that's just an idea. So I thank you for all your services. I, I wouldn't want to be sitting in your seat listening to all this, all day after day after day. And I appreciate everything you guys do and the patience you give all of us. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
And we don't mind listening. That's our job. In fact, I like listening to the people. I like hearing the people of this county.
Good evening, Rosemary Saban, Natrona County resident. Um, Mr. Nicolason, you mentioned that that's, that bill of Senate File forty-four is being considered. Did you notice if there's any changes to that one particular amendment by Harshman?
I have not had a chance. I've been sitting here for a bit, so I don't know what the current status is other than the information that I try, I was asked to relay to this audience tonight.
Okay, I'll have to look at that again further. I sympathize with all these people here. I believe when the people turn out, they need to be heard and they need to be represented. However, with Senate File forty-four, knee-jerk reactions to try to rectify a singular case with a state regulation is not beneficial to the rest of the state that depend on mining. So that's a negative imposition, and that needs to be really considered. Um, I do notice that that property is loved and managed very well by the people. There's other parcels around the Natrona County area that you can't say the same about. So it's apparent that these people really do take pride in what, what this land provides to them. And so for the reason that everybody's standing, coming out and voicing their concerns, I stand with them. Um, but for the people of this audience, please be advised that this is the importance of being vigilant and being involved in your government. It is a government of the people by the people. And these gentlemen will listen when you turn out in numbers like this and speak on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to be quick here. Um, let's see, my name is Tyler Paddock. I live on Sixteenth Street. Um, I am the Vice President of the Central Wyoming Trails Alliance. Uh, our mission as a group is to add value to this community, uh, by creating and improving outdoor recreation opportunities. Um, the gravel pit is a counter to that mission, and, uh, as such, we, we oppose the destruction, um, of one of the very easily accessible places, uh, around Casper to recreate, you know, most of the, around most of the year. Um, uh, yeah, so we, we urge you as well to, uh, protect this access to, to our public lands. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners. I'm Greg Wager, seven thousand Coats Road. And you heard me last meeting. Uh, I've got some maps that I've sent you before. I'm not sure you opened them, but I'm gonna re, uh, reissue them to you. And I've got one for each one of you. And it's, what it's gonna depict is in the, in the blue is where Mr. True has mining leases. And this one section in the middle is Squaw Creek in the school section. So you gotta realize, he can put gravel mines anywhere through here. And so I, I want you to see the vastness. And I do, I do agree that the Trues are great people, but you gotta understand that when Kyle came to my house Sunday night, he explained his economics. So as you look at this map, and the top of the map is north, the yellow square is the school section, because it's a special use section. To the west of it is section thirty-five and thirty-four. Thirty-four has web creek, thirty-five has field creek, thirty, thirty-six has squaw creek, and thirty-one and, and one has wolf creek. So there's creeks, drainages on each one of these school sec, or state sections. And my home is L-shaped at the southern end. He's got gravel leases all around me, surrounding me. He, that's why the back hole was right out my front door, letting me know something was going on. And so I'm surrounded. Uh, section one to my east borders, borders the, uh, the Garden Creek Road, the mountain road. And then if you look on the right side of this map, do you see it says Diamond Ranches, True Drilling and Diamond Ranches? That's True's private land right there. He's got leases on thirty and thirty-one. So my question was to Kyle was, if this thing's so great, why don't you put it in your front yard? And it was because of the same reasons you've heard tonight that we don't want it. So I, I, I wanna make that impression on you. And, and I understand we may have state statutes or past cases that legally you're saying you could put this in, but you've still got a, a duty to the people in this area not to allow a gravel pit. And if you look at your two oh two two zoning, and you read the conditions required for CUP, and I may have some disagreement, but it's talking about not putting excavation on slopes and different things in that that I highlighted in yellow. And I see several places that don't allow excavation on the side of this mountain. And the one reason why I wanna bring, uh, the, coming from Douglas on Interstate, do you remember seeing that big red wart on the side of that mountain? For years, we see it where they put, where they mine scoria and put it there on the side of the road. Coming in from KC, I don't know when you're gonna start seeing the mountain, but it's pretty early after that. And you're gonna see a big scar on the side of our mountain. And this is, this is our, this is our, our place. And he explained to me the economics. Twelve to eighteen dollars a ton he's gonna receive. Six to eight dollars extraction and delivery costs, costs. So that leaves him about ten dollars, if I'm doing the math right. If you read his leases, he gives the state sixty cents a ton to destroy our lives. And so Commissioner Laird just said, this is your state land. Well, would I do that deal on my own land, get sixty cents for him to destroy it? Absolutely not. And I wouldn't expect you to either. And the last thing I wanna say is, is that, is that besides all the waterways that are in jeopardy, it's, it's the people to the south of this. And the guy at our meeting on the twenty-eighth, our public meeting, that stood up and said, I have, uh, land at the North Flat Pit, and it's destroyed my house. Uh, Squaw Creek will be destroyed. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Caleb Coleman, forty-five eleven Squaw Creek Road. Um, so two summers ago, we actually tied into the city water on Squaw Creek, because our well produces less than half gallon a minute. Um, when we did that, county planning told us they would not give any more easements up Squaw Creek to tie into that city water line, because there's already that many lines running up there. So what happens to everybody else south of us when this mine screws up, the water screws up wells, that are already, a lot of our neighbors have questionable wells? What happens when their wells are dead and they can't tie in, and somebody has to loop that water main through there? The cost will be insane. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're getting close to last chance, so anybody else, uh, wanna speak to the Commission for public comment?
I'll be quick, but my name is Tom Sawyer, and I live on Swingle Acres Road, which is just off Squaw, Squaw Creek. And I'm about a mile northeast from that school section. We moved there a couple of years ago, partially because of its proximity to that. And we have a couple young children, and we bike, run, we utilize that land, and we just hate to see any of this happen. We have all the same concerns about water and air quality for our family. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
All right. Uh, well, once again, uh, on behalf of the county, we thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate it, and, um, thanks for, uh, a lot of you sticking it out till the end. Um, section five point zero seven of our zoning resolution has the criteria, uh, that we would have to consider if a, uh, conditional use permit application, uh, were submitted. Um, in that same area of our zoning resolution, there's also a procedural, um, it, it lines out the procedure, which includes a public hearing, it includes notice to the public. Um, so anyway, that's, that's, uh, the process. We, we heard from Mr. True that this is weeks, not month, I'm sorry, months, not weeks. Um, but in any event, um, we will make sure that there is robust, uh, adequate notice, uh, to the public, um, once an application, um, has been filed, if it's filed. I wanted just to clarify a comment I said, because it, it sounded overly negative, um, and, and, and that is with respect to the Office of State Lands. That's just their mentality. Um, you know, you're welcome to, to stay after it. Um, so that's, I don't know that there's much of a process, uh, but, but let them know as you have been. There's also a DEQ, um, process. If there is a pit, uh, that's approved, at some point, there's an air quality hearing, and there's a water quality hearing. Uh, so those are additional opportunities for, uh, the public to weigh in. Um, I think that we'll continue to hear more on this issue from you and from others. So, um, thanks, and we'll look forward to, uh, working through the issues with the public. Um, I'm not aware, uh, Commissioners, of any reason for executive session, unless I'm mistaken. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Can I, may I say one thing before?
Yeah, Commissioner North.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know everyone up here feels the same way. Um, this is the largest crowd that I've seen in this courtroom since I've been a Commissioner. And it's good to see the public come out and be concerned about things and voice their opinions. And I can honestly say, I've had more emails from the public in the last four days than I have had in the last three years. So, uh, but we do appreciate that. We appreciate the input that you've given us and your concern, because that's, that's what we need to, to hear from. So I just wanna say thank you for that.
Well, and, uh, I got ahead of myself. I, I think it's past my bedtime. Um, so we do have this thing called Commissioner Comments. So I guess that was Commissioner North. Commissioner Laird, do you have any Commissioner comments?
I do. I appreciate all your honesty. And I appreciate you standing up for your community. And I'm glad to be your neighbor. And I'm glad to be your county commissioner. And, uh, I'm gonna do right by the people in Natrona County. You know, Mr. Mr. True, the Trues are people from Natrona County, too. And so we have to treat him as fairly as we treat you. Um, but I keep thinking about, would they let him put a big mine at the base of the Tetons? So sometimes, money has to take a second seat. So sometimes, money has to take a second seat. But when we have this public hearing, I hope about four times as many of you that showed up tonight shows up for the public hearing. Because what, one of the things that I'm sworn to do, and two swearings, and so is Mr. Nicolason, is when we get our law license for Wyoming, we have to swear to uphold the state, the laws of the state of Wyoming, the Constitution of the state of Wyoming, and the Constitution of the United States. And when we get elected by you all as county commissioner, which I consider a great honor, I took an oath to uphold the laws of this county. And I intend to do that. So you all have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Frill.
I just want to thank everybody also for coming out tonight. And I appreciate those conversations that you have reached out to me. And, and I met with several of you. And I appreciate that time that we had to sit down and talk about it. And I appreciate the idea of you ran with some of you. You guys got organized fast. And, but, but that's what it takes. I mean, you know, we had the discussion, a discussion the other day as far as what you needed to do to make things happen. You guys know the numbers you have to have to get the governor to reverse this. So we'll, we'll do the work on our half. You continue doing what you're doing on your side. But thanks again.
Commissioner Millen?
Not really going to reiterate everything they said. I do want to thank you for coming out. This is, this is impressive. It's one of the bigger meetings that I've been to where so much participation was here in my, what, six years now. So really do appreciate you guys coming out. Nobody mentioned it. Y'all are being activists right now. You're letting us know what's going on. You're letting us know whether or not you like this. Get out there and talk to them about that bill. If we lose local control, what you all are doing in front of Buzz right now won't matter. We got to keep the local control. So please get with your legislators and let them know this is important. Local control is important. It's not important to them down in Cheyenne. It's important to them, to you here. Have a good evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.